I'm going to call the Hollis School Board meeting to order at 10:04. This is our annual reorganization meeting, but prior to that, I just want to go through a couple of things. First of all, under New Hampshire RSA 91-A colon two, three, B. Due to COVID-19 crisis, in accordance with Governor's emergency order number 12, the board is authorized to be electronically. I'm going to need to go through and ask each board member to stay with us. Obviously, we know why you're here because of COVID-19, but I know that you can hear the meeting and that to the best of your ability, you're alone. So I'll just start with Amy Kellner.
Yes, I am participating electronically from home and I am alone and I can hear proceedings.
Thank you. Tammy Freed?
Yes, Tammy Freed. I am alone. I'm at home. I'm participating because of COVID-19 and I'm, I can hear and see everything.
Thank you. Brooke Arthur?
Hi, I'm Brooke Arthur. I'm participating remotely from home due to COVID-19 and I'm alone. I am having a little trouble with the audio, but I think if I alter some things on my computer, I'll get it here better.
Thank you. Rob Mann?
Rob Mann, I am home currently due to the Corona-19 situation. I am in my office alone. I would also, I'm, I am getting some heavy echoes, so I would say for folks that are on the call, that are listening, go on mute because sometimes you get feedback from your, from your, from your, your local speaker. So if you, if you're not really saying anything, it may help if you just stay on mute and then come off mute when you want to say something. It'll keep the echoing down to a minimum.
I just cut out, sorry.
Carol?
Did you say my name, Andy?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Yep. Carol, participating electronically due to the COVID-19 restrictions, stay at home. I am alone in my home office with a headset on, so no one else is hearing the call. Thank you.
Excellent. And I am here at the middle school with Assistant Superintendent Bob Thompson and Rich Raymond is doing the tech. We have chose to broadcast from the middle school because it provides us the most tech support and it does allow us, if we had public to show up, to have proper social distancing. At this time, I would like to move forward with the process of nominating a board chair. Let me just outline how that works. Momentarily, I will open the floor and accept a nomination and then I would ask for a second. Any individual put forth, so if we have more than one, we would address both of them. Once I have the nomination in a second, I would call for a discussion. Once the discussion is over, I would call for a vote. If that person is then elected, I can either A, turn the meeting over to them, or B, be designated to run the meeting remotely. It would be the chair's choice and we would proceed to elect the vice chair and a secretary. Are there any questions before I call for nomination? Seeing none, I will accept anybody's nomination for school board chair.
I nominate Rob Mann as chair for this, this year. Tammy Freed, sorry.
Second?
I have a nomination in a second for Rob Mann. Is there any discussion?
This is no time for changing leadership in the middle of the screen during an emergency.
Anything else from the board members?
I agree.
I'm sorry, I haven't, I, the audio broke up. I haven't heard any nominations or anything.
It was you, buddy. You were nominated.
And seconded and the, the thought process behind it was that they wanted to continue, keep continuous leadership during this time of emergency.
I see. So it's live, it's seconded?
Yes.
Okay. I would add, Andy, that I will accept to stay on temporarily as chair. I would like to put to the school board shortly after we get through this issue with COVID, maybe, I don't know if that's July or August or whenever this is, I am going to request that the board reorganize at that time.
I understand that. I know that there have been some concerns just with business commitments and work commitments, but I do appreciate your willingness, willingness to serve at this time. Is there any other discussion on, on Rob Mann as chair? Seeing that Rob will accept the position, I would ask for a roll call vote, starting with Amy.
Amy, aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Robert?
I will abstain the vote, Andy.
Okay, got it. So that was four, zero, one. At this point, Rob, would, would you prefer to take over the meeting or would you like me to run today's meeting as we enter this new format?
Andy, I think since you're kind of at the head, the brain central here of the SAU, I wouldn't mind if you continue with the agenda.
Okay, I will do that and jump in anytime. At this time, I would take a nomination for a vice chair.
I nominate Amy. Who's currently, Tammy, right? I would like to stay with the same leadership, so I nominate Tammy Freed.
Is there a second?
Yes, second, second, yes.
So I have a nomination in a second for Tammy Freed to be the vice chair. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go through a roll call vote. Amy?
Amy, aye.
Tammy?
Tammy, aye.
Carol?
Carol, aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
That's five, zero. I would now accept a nomination for secretary.
I nominate Brooke Arthur.
Second.
I have a nomination in a second for Brooke Arthur. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question with respect to the position itself. These, these Zoom videos are recordable. You know, is that something that plays into the secretary's role in their, in their assignment, in their opportunities? I'd just like to understand the job of recording these things officially, of taking, you know, being responsible for the meeting minutes in this condition where the video can be archived.
During these emergency situations, we will be archiving the video and posting it. Dawn McMillan will continue to do all of our public minutes as she's done in the past. When we move to non-public, which we will later today, at this time, the administration is willing to take the minutes because again, with everything going on in everybody's homes to get them typed up and posted, we just feel it'd be easier for us at this point. And then to Rob's point, when we move, you know, through this crisis, we can reevaluate and reflect on what we've done.
I guess my question is, for example, in the non-public, do we, can the secretary record non-public? Hit the record button on Zoom for non-public?
The, the host can, so Bob would be able to do that.
Okay.
Yep, so you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
So I have a nomination in a second. We've had discussions, seeing no further discussion. Amy?
Amy, aye.
Tammy?
Tammy, aye.
Carol?
Carol, aye.
Brooke?
Brooke, aye.
And Rob?
Rob, aye.
Okay. We have a complete slate of offices. We'll do committee appointments and a couple of the policies that we traditionally with this meeting, at a meeting down the road, because none of those are essential to our business right at this time. I'd like to move forward and...
Andy, excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I apologize. The only thing is the manifest signing, which has to continue. Does the chair, can the chair appoint the manifest signers today to?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave all the signers and all that in place.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we have that now, so I will inform Kelly that we have the same signers and I thank you for that. We're moving to our agenda now. The first thing, is there any agenda adjustments? And the, I just have one for the board to consider, and that would be public input. And I bring that up because our attorney has advised us to, to look at that because it would be very difficult during these electronic meetings, because again, we would really be looking to potentially have to take emails and a number of different things. So James O'Shaughnessy from Drummond and Woodson suggested that we just pause public input, not from the standpoint of not wanting to hear from the public, but we don't hopefully have to use this means too often. We would have this month's meeting and probably next month's and then be able to make a determination where we're at with this whole emergency. So I throw that out and ask the board for their input.
Tammy, you're muted. You're muted, we can't hear you.
Sorry, you can't see my big mouth moving, so you know I'm talking. Carol, I wanted to ask Carol a mess, a question about, about a comment she made at our emergency meeting respecting how Zoom works. Carol, you had said something about there's a way to like click a button that raises a hand?
When you are in a Zoom webinar function, you can restrict all of the people from doing anything other than raising their hand to be called on or putting something into a Q and A and the Q and A can go directly to the organizers or it can go to all attendees for everybody to see. So there are definitely ways to do that. For instance, when we do our all-company meetings and we have 2,400 people in our company, that's how we do it. So our CEO presents and if you have input, you click and they respond and everybody's automatically muted, no one is unmuted. So it would be written input.
Okay. I understand from all the things that we've been sent by the NHSBA and other sources as well as the SAU that under these emergency circumstances, you know, Andy's recommendation's perfectly, perfectly legal and ethical, but if this does continue a great deal longer than, than we're hoping, I would like to ask someone to research this for us so that the public could raise their hand like Carol's describing and participate in real time. There's no point in having the tool if we don't do it.
I have to agree with Tammy. I hesitate to block out the public at a time like this. We've, I know I personally have heard from different parents and community members just asking a lot of questions, so I, I don't want that to be discounted, but I also don't want to rely on our secondhand question receipt and stuff like that to then bring it forth to the board. So I, I would like us to look at that a little more closely even going into May, if possible.
We could, we can absolutely do that, Carol. I know Bob and I were practicing with the hand raising earlier this morning. Is this his new territory for all of us? Exactly, I thought that was the hand raise and then realized it's actually a function on the, on the device.
The button, yes.
Yeah. So I have no problem, I just wanted to put it out there. And with the board's permission, I don't see any public on this morning, so I would move forward. We did get some emails and I do intend to address some of the questions and concerns that people have sent, because I think that's very important, but I just think at this point, we can move into our discussion phase if there's no other questions or comments.
Would the public be aware of being able to be present at this meeting?
If we move forward, well, the agenda was posted for this meeting and the Zoom address was there, so anybody who clicked on the Zoom address would have been eligible to come into the meeting.
Okay.
And we can explain in, in our agenda posting next month, how that would work to see if we can give a greater comfort level for those who might like to participate.
Andy, who's, is there a moderator for the technical aspect of this? Is that what you mean by Bob?
Bob is the host of the meeting.
Host, okay.
Yep, so he is the one that welcomed everybody into the meeting and then Rich is the technical support.
So if, if a member of the public wants to click in and we're too busy babbling, it's Bob who's seeing that traffic?
That's correct.
All right, great.
You will, you will also, Tammy, see them pop up on the screen in a black box, kind of like Rob is?
I see.
So everybody will be here because we're sharing videos.
And I'm monitoring, if anyone does come in, what I will do is I will mute them if they're a member of the public and then Andy or the chair can decide whether or not, if
they raise their hand, if they wanted to speak.
So this is interesting, if you don't mind, and I'm sorry to be difficult about this, it's new. I'm looking at the bottom of the speed, of the screen under Bob's face and I know there are five of us on the board and there's two administrators on the meeting, so that's seven, and I think Rich or Bill must be there, so that's eight, but it says participants 10.
Well, you have Gina, you have Paula.
Oh, is Gina there too?
Yep.
So Tam, Tam, if you click on participants, you're gonna see a window open up.
A list of everybody.
And that's listing everyone, it tells you who's muted. This would enable you to raise your hand if, if we chose to move to that format. So if anyone does come in to the meeting after it has started, they'll show up on that list of participants.
Could you all just humor me while I click raise your hand?
Yep.
Yeah.
So how did, I clicked raise your hand.
So there, your hand, there is a hand icon next to your name on the participants list, which Bob is monitoring, so he would see your hand go up. If you click on participant lists.
See, and I'm lowering people's hands as they raise them.
Got it, got it, got it.
Yes.
So much for, for practicing that, I appreciate it very much. It's very simple. I think that when we do promote this more to the public, if we have to continue for a long time, we need to do an, like an instructional PDF or something.
Yeah, and it's fairly easy, to Carol's point, it's fairly easy to manage.
Excellent.
Yeah, Bob has lots of flexibility and he can make the videos and the, and the audio be totally off when people join, where he would have to undo it or you have to do yourself. And again, if you choose the webinar route and you lock everything down with passwords and all sorts of stuff, it's very controllable.
Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone.
You're welcome.
One more question on the, on the video.
Yep.
Posted, the video will be public after the meeting?
Yes, the same as we always do, Rich will post it to our YouTube channel.
To the YouTube channel? Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. At this point, with the board's permission, I'll move into the discussion phase. The first thing is I wanted to provide you an update on COVID-19. We are in our two days of remote learning. Much longer than I understand the one that is happening.
Hey, Andy, it sounds like you're in the bottom of a barrel.
Okay.
Something Bob did caused Andy to dis...
No, I think Andy leaned forward onto the microphone.
And I also need to mute.
Okay, is that better?
There we go. Much better, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, keep, keep your left earbud in.
Yes.
It's got the mic on it.
So we're 10 days in to this emergency situation. I'd like to commend faculty and staff. We have a number of items that we will be addressing and we'll talk our way through some of them today, but in terms of the enthusiasm and the dedication that they have put forth to get this up and running, we, we closed officially on the 13th. We had two PD days on the 16th and 17th and we were up and running remotely on the 18th. There are still districts in New Hampshire that are not up and running. Many of them did not start until just last week and we're all encountering a number of different things as we go through it. We continue to allow access to our buildings for families. We continue to serve meals and I'd like to commend Amy Cassidy and her food service crews. They're just doing an outstanding job on Monday and Wednesdays. I would encourage anybody who watches a stream and is in need of services like that to please reach out to Amy and we will definitely make that happen for you. In Hollis, meals are picked up at the middle school and in Brookline, meals are picked up at Richard Mahaki Memorial School. In terms of facilities, custodians are doing what I would call more of a deep clean. They're, you know, cleaning the desktops, the rooms. It's kind of almost close to a summer cleaning with the hope that we will be returning May 4th. We'll, we'll find that out more as we, we move forward. In terms of the, the actual remote learning education, we hope to expand the use of Zoom at all our grade levels. We are working with our teachers to kind of get them to post assignments, maybe either at least two or three days or maybe for the week if possible, and working with them also to assist students by chunking assignments. We will be starting some, what I, what I would call remediation and what that would mean is that each grade level will be working with their building administrators to determine a time where on a weekly basis, that teacher is really there to help students catch up, maybe better understand a concept they might not have understood and to move the child and the family forward. We've had some very good successes and we've hit some road bumps. As you can imagine, everybody's technology skill is different, everybody's home situation is different. We are encountering some difficulties with just a number of people in a particular home that need to be online at approximately the same time, so we're trying to create more flexibilities for families so that if mom and dad have to be on for work, that the child can, can participate later in the day. But overall, I'd like to commend the staff. I'd like to also give a shout out to Assistant Superintendent Thompson and Amy Rowe for their dedication to our special ed students. They have reached out to all families and have been working closely with them to make sure we're meeting the needs. Now, in some cases, some of the needs will not be able to be met just because of the remote learning style and that will entitle some families to what I would call compensatory services, which is a mechanism that's built into the special ed laws that allows families to access services after this were over, you know, catch up. But that does come at, at a cost to the district and Bob and Amy are working on determining exactly what that will look like. From the business office end, Kelly Sealy and her crew has been doing yeoman's work so that we continue to put out the manifests. We have created time sheets with accompanying logs to track all personnel, so we know exactly what they're doing and what they're being compensated for. Just this morning, Kelly let me know that next week we'll be working with a bond slash lease attorney, because we'll be looking to go out to bid for the facilities project that was passed and we will start to do facilities meetings during, remotely through Zoom in the next couple of weeks. I'd also like to thank Gina for all her efforts of leading us from a curriculum standpoint. Again, we're not saying that we don't have a lot of work to do, but we're very happy with our progress. I'm very happy at where we sit compared to some of my colleagues who are struggling just to get this up and running. And I think it's a credit to our staff, it's a credit to the administration, and I think it's a credit to the school boards, because about three or four years ago, we decided to move forward with Google Classroom and a number of things that are assisting us at this time. I think the other piece we're trying to balance is the social emotional wellness of both our adults and our students. These are difficult times. 24/7 news does not help. Some of the most recent messages are very difficult for adults to deal with, let alone little ones. So we're trying to incorporate some activities in the next couple of weeks. We'll be doing a spirit week coming up, K to 12, so all students will have different dress up ideas and activities and we'll be asking them to, you know, take pictures and submit them to the principals and things like that. We have some things coming online through our physical education department that will allow young men and women to maybe go out and practice some of their skills. We look at this as a avenue to maybe give mom and dad a break, they can go out and work on their baseball and swing the bat. These will all be done in, in a, you know, one-person format so that we keep our social distancing, which is paramount. And then we'll also be doing a number of things where we start to look at how we can better access, you know, what people have at home and their yards to kind of, again, de-stress. These are very difficult times and we recognize that and we want to be there to support families. The overwhelming response has been positive to everything we've done, but there have been, I've received a number of emails recently just asking for either guidance, clarification, or can we revisit this or that? And all that's in progress, actually, when we finish this Zoom meeting with the board, we have a Zoom meeting for all our administrators across the SAU. So we continue to adjust and adapt and I'd be happy to take any questions or concerns that maybe have been expressed either around the virus itself or for remote learning.
I think some feedback that I've heard is, you know, we, as parents, we talk about what our, what our kids have gotten from their teachers and I'm seeing that it's not consistent and I realize that every teacher has their own teaching styles, but I think some folks are looking for a little bit more consistency. Now, maybe that's going to be addressed by, you know, having the Zoom be more often, things like that, but you know, even, even grade level, things are not seeming to be being addressed the same way. So I think that that's, that's one I think that folks are going to want to hear more about. I mean, obviously, when this started, it was, all right, three weeks, let's kind of cobble something together and cobble is not, does not imply negativity, by the way, but it's, let's throw it all together, because we've got three weeks to do this. And now it's, we're looking at at least, at least five more weeks on top of that. So now it's kind of, let's set some standards, let's set some guidelines and expectations that everybody can kind of follow and I think that would provide some, some comfort to the families doing the remote learning.
And I think on top of what Carol just said, because it may even be longer than five weeks, right, is that what I'm hearing from various people who have kids in the Hollis schools, as opposed to the high school, is that they are feeling the deficit of FaceTime with the teachers. So some teachers, you know, jumped right into the remote learning and have the tech and have the presence and have the personality to handle it. And, you know, some teachers are still posting, are not live on camera with the kids. If there's some way to train, encourage, you know, PD, anything to help get real FaceTime via Zoom for even the youngest students, I think it would make a huge difference to the students as well as their parents.
And can I speak to that for a minute? Is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
Please.
So, well, like, we've definitely heard that ourselves and so we, you know, knowing that our first three weeks, we're kind of getting everything together like Carol had said, we have been getting everybody trained on Zoom and how to use that, so they've been doing like meetings, informal meetings, sort of with their colleagues, just to get the, the flow of how everything works. And we started finally getting everybody up and running back to their PLCs and things like that. So what we've done is sort of created a week-long communication chain, so to speak, so that we can get things more consistent. So I think as things move forward, you'll see all of those things being addressed. It was a whirlwind of resources and a whirlwind of everybody trying to help everybody that we had to kind of take a collective deep breath and say, okay, you know, we're, we're juggling a lot of balls in here, let's start to get some consistency going. So I think that it's, it's very well received, the feedback is very well received and we have heard from parents, I've reached out to parents and they've given some great feedback as well, not in any angry way, very appreciative of what we're doing, but like, you know, hey, I would like a little more of this or this would be helpful to me, which is all good feedback. And we're taking that through PLC leadership teams who are taking it back to their PLC leaders, who are then discussing it, bringing it back to admin for some guidance and then we kind of repeat the whole thing all over again. So that feedback is certainly welcomed and, you know, people are definitely giving that to us, so I just wanted to pipe in that we're sort of getting that ball rolling and I think we'll feel better as we move forward.
Could we, yeah, spell out what PLC is and what it does, just one sentence, professional learning communities and summarize.
It's where grade levels can collaborate on curriculum and meeting student need.
So professional learning community.
Yes.
It's when the teachers at grade level meet each other for kind of work.
Yep.
Want the public to understand what we're talking.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, thanks.
Yeah, I would just chime in just in the, on the consistency piece and I appreciate your efforts going forward, Paula, on that. I, I too am hearing lack in consistency of delivery is creating, you know, some, some stress, I guess. Some, some of the kids are not being able to find all their assignments, thinking that they're current and then only to hear that, oh, they haven't given in this assignment or that assignment. They were, they thought they were, they had them all and then they're discovering that they don't. And I'm thinking some sort of touch point via Zoom at some... at some sort of regular basis from the teachers as opposed to just assigning, you know, things to do, I think is going to go a long way. So we would ask, I would ask that the administration continue to look into those opportunities going forward. I, I think, I think we're seeing, you know, a lot of folks aren't used to working remotely, certainly. And, and that, that's a learning curve in and of itself beyond just trying to stay current with their assignments and workload.
Yeah, I would also say another sort of comment that I'm hearing that I'm feeling myself is maybe some more instruction via Zoom. So far, it's just, it seems like there's been just, for math anyway, just a lot of work kind of pushed down, and it seems like the instruction is falling on the parents, which is definitely causing some stress in, in our family.
I don't understand what you're trying to teach me, kids.
I seriously, I clearly don't know math. I never was a sixth grade math student, obviously. And the other thing that I would just like, maybe the step to consider is it's kind of like the, the level of work, if that, I may be recognizing that at home, we can't quite achieve all of the curriculum and all of the elements of, that would have been addressed in the classroom. Again, I'm, we're finding here, and I'm also hearing from other parents that the workload, maybe we just need to take it down. I don't want to say the bare minimum, but maybe some opportunities for enrichment for children that want it, but then kind of just sort of the basics for some of our other students.
You know, that reminds me, Amy, of when my kids were at the upper, I don't know if teachers are still doing this or not, but one particular educator was very consistent throughout the year, and both years, both of my kids had this person, of handing out rubrics for what an A-level work is, B-level, et cetera. And I wonder if some, we found that very, very helpful around here as an educational tool for the student to decide what they wanted to commit, but also as a clarification of what the teacher's expectations were. And I'm wondering if something similar, not based on grades so much, but more what you just described, where each teacher creates some kind of map for, you know, grade level expectation, enrichment, advanced, a challenge, whatever, so that there's a kind of a, more of a rubric that's consistent classroom to classroom? Anyway, I guess I'm wading into the educator's job. I apologize, but what you said reminded me of that.
Can I?
Absolutely.
I think that time expectations are something that I haven't seen at all in, in my experience with my kids in this so far, and that's something that would be very helpful of how much time kids are expected to spend on various assignments. And, and overall, on a daily basis, how much time. And I know that the, the letter that we had had recommendations, and I don't know if that's what our district is using or not, but that would be helpful.
We, we have a couple of things that are going to go on. Tomorrow, we have a, an update out to families. And as part of that, Gina has created a educational survey, K to 12, to get this type of feedback from all families, so that'll go out. We are working to balance the time on task versus the environment that we're in. And we also greatly respect that parents are not usually the deliverer of education, and we're going to work towards doing more things via Zoom. And this is, is very timely, like I said, because we're going to leave this and jump on with the administrators at some point, and we can start to put this together. And I can tell you that our teachers are very open, but as you can imagine, just like for many adults who have moved to a remote environment, it is different. And we will need to work with them and adjust with them. But I, I think, you know, from Paula's comments, I can tell you it's already starting to happen. And then Candy and I actually had a discussion last night. We had a follow-up meeting this morning. She's actually working on some pieces that we felt were more important than attending the meeting. So I think we'll have a number of things with probably a little bit different rollout next week.
And can I, I know everything we just said was a little bit on the critical side. I just want to say that I've got a kindergartner and a second grader, and their two teachers have been incredible, very responsive, absolutely providing tons of material, tons of support. My kindergartner gets a daily message, a daily video message from her teacher with their daily greeting, which is what they do in their classrooms. So they're getting to still do that, and she gives the greeting to us, whoever's in the house. You know, and just for also an example, her, her Friday videos are in the kitchen, and she calls them Food Fridays, and she teaches them how to make a healthy snack.
Oh, how wonderful.
So it's not all, let's, let's, let's bag on everybody because I've, we've been having a wonderful experience. And my second grader got her first video message from her teacher today, and it was awesome. So just top-notch, by the way, for our experience as well. And we know that this is a new experience for everybody. I, I work remote all the time, so this is not new for me. This background happens all the time. So for me, it's not as much of a change. So I'm extremely sensitive to everybody who's trying to manage both their own work now being remote as well as having the, the teaching role kind of thrust on them in that, in that. So kudos, Paula, as well for that. The team, the team is great.
Thank you, Carol.
I just want to say, my comments were not intended. I hope they didn't come across as critical. This is just problem solving and, and on my part.
Oh, no, you're good, Tammy. It was, I, I do like to also just share the cool stuff that's happening.
Wonderful what you just described. I think that's what everybody's hoping can eventually happen. And I think it's good for the staff, too, because a lot of people like me who tend to be more tactile, you know, it's easy to avoid 21st century learning. I personally feel that aside from the tragedies that are occurring around us and aside from the very tough fiscal issues that are bound to really hamstring us, you know, all of us going forward and, and overcoming this, the situation we're in, the silver lining is that these 21st century tech learning has been, society has dragged its feet on this, especially academia. And I think this is going to ultimately be very good for education, for public education.
Did Rob want to speak before he drops off? I just thought, did everyone see that message from Rob?
No, it's okay. I, I do, we'll have to drop in about 10 minutes. I have a, another meeting, a big virtual meeting for work right now, and I'm getting pinged by my directors to say, hey. So I, I'm, I'm going to quietly roll off at some point, and I'll leave the reins to Andy and Tammy after that.
And again, I, I don't look at the, the board comments as negative. This is a opportunity for us to receive feedback, and it has been very well received, and we will address much of it. I will share, like Carol shared, the overwhelming response has been, you know, the thank you and the appreciation for taking the actions quickly and decisively so that we weren't in school and that we were all home and relatively safe as this is rolling through New Hampshire and many other communities. So we're, we're going to take your feedback. And what I will probably do is in one of my email updates to the board, I will provide you, you know, what we have from our discussions today. With the board's permission. You're welcome. With the board's permission.
Andy, I just, I would just add that I think the communication you and your staff has done has been exemplary. It was really very much appreciated, whether it's directed only to the board or to the greater, you know, Hollis community. So I know those things take time to put together and to summarize, and could take a good chunkier day to do. So it is appreciated, though, and thanks.
Thank you. If it's.
The, the four-day work week with the flex day, is that something that the administration is considering for our district?
I, I don't think we'll move to a four-day work week. What I would rather do is, because of everybody being at home and, and, you know, internet access and all of those things, we're, we're going to be discussing today, working by grade level so that we, on certain days, there would be more of a remediation day where your faculty member is available, but you're not getting what I would say new items pushed out. Because I believe if we just went to everybody at once or a four-day work week, we would continue to overload some houses' internet systems. And that's one of the pieces of feedback that we'll receive that families really appreciate. A number of our high school students are doing their work later in the day, and that schedule has just helped mom and dad and everybody. So we won't be moving to what I would say, what I would call a four-day work week, but we will build in, you know, what I'll call a remediation or acceleration day so that those students who are looking to go a little further would have something. Those students who need to check in again with their teacher would have that ability as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. At this point, if it's.
It's sort of like the Cav block model you're using for the high school? So there'd be a day that's kind of Cav block, okay?
Yes, that's a great analogy, Tammy. You know, we have that built into the schedule at the high school every day. We're just looking to look at that more from days of the week because it will, it will help families. And, and also take some stress off kids. The, the last thing is, we'll be discussing grading. You know, from an elementary perspective, I think we would be moving for the third trimester to pass/fail. We haven't made a final decision on that. We're having different discussions at the middle school and high school because grades do have a, a different impact. And we haven't, you know, as a educational group, made a decision on that yet, but we are considering all options there as well.
For those with only young kids, they should be aware that universities are struggling with this question of grades versus pass/fail also. Like, my kid goes to UNH, and they still haven't resolved this. And there's one possibility that they would do pass/fail for some kinds of classes and grades for other kinds of classes. There is also the possibility of students choosing at the college level to either accept pass/fail or ask for a grade. So it's still, I, I mean, parents should under, the community should realize that this is not just SAU 41 that's struggling with it. It's all the way up through higher education as well.
At this point, with the board's permission, I'm going to turn it over to Gina to just talk about the, the school calendar because we'd like to take a vote on that today.
Thank you. So looking at the school calendar that was in the agenda, I apologize, I had to do a screenshot of it to get it into the agenda. I didn't have the necessary technology in my home. But essentially, it follows our very traditional calendar, which is we, the teachers return the Monday prior to Labor Day. And Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday are professional days for teachers. And then Thursday, September 3rd, would be all students begin school. A couple weird things about this calendar is that Labor Day is so very late this year. The Labor Day is September 7th, which means that the start of school is September 3rd, which is, like I said, much later than, than usual. Also, we, I have proposed a September 8th professional day because there will be voting in, at the high school and at CSDA because it is a big election. And I'll see what else is interesting. Another voting day is November 3rd, so that is a professional day proposed on this calendar. There are no professional days proposed for March, so that I sort of look at that February/March PD day is just moved to September. And, and then our last day of school would be June 23rd, and that would include five snow days. And the last teacher day would be the 20th, Friday, June 25th. I also, although it's, it's strange for families to go back to school for two days and then have a four-day weekend, it is a good day to have professional development for our staff because when we open schools and, you know, Andy presents to everyone, most teachers are really thinking about, okay, I gotta get in my classroom, I gotta, you know, laminate, I have to make copies, I have to do all these things. And it doesn't really matter what we're saying. We could be doing a really great dance, but they're really focused on getting ready for the kids. And so we would like to have them focus on getting ready for the kids to return. And then, once the kids return and we establish a couple of days of routine for them, okay, now let's talk about professional development and learning and what we're doing as an SAU. So although, you know, that's my silver lining for that day. And I would also say that you are the first board to look at this version, but this version of the calendar is going before all three boards today. Are there any questions? Tammy, can you turn on your, your mic?
Tammy, your mic is off.
Tammy, all day. Bob, you should be able to unmute her.
I'm there, I found it.
There she is, okay.
I had so many layers of documents over, and I couldn't get to it. The question I have is about the end date. I realize that if we're starting school a week late because of the oddities of the Labor Day calendar, which happens every, what, seven years, every eighth year, then inevitably, just doing the math that we tend to do about our 180 days, et cetera, 178 is, we end up in the late June. And, you know, let's, let's just assume next year, none of this is going on, and it's all going to be normal. Is there some flexibility around when we could end earlier, assuming the snow dates don't go berserk? Because June 23rd is really late. And it, it could be that if we are able to deliver everything we need to deliver, parents will have had, I mean, by that, by next June, people are going to be extremely stressed. We'll, we'll have had enough.
And, and, you know, while I agree with you, the 178 days are contractual.
Right.
So there's a lot to be considered along with the other two districts. But at the end of the day, you know, Andy makes the decision to, to make up the snow days or not. There is conversation. When we were developing the calendar before the COVID-19 business really became front and center, we talked about, is there the potential to figure out what, what our capacity is for doing some sort of remote learning? Well, now we know that we have the capacity to do it. One question is still, okay, the technology, we loaned some technology to families. We wouldn't be able to loan it just on a snow day. Or on a snow day, there might not be power. So what does that look like? So there's still a lot of questions. Sure. But we've certainly been thinking about them and definitely.
Meaning, meaning, you're saying meaning.
Like blizzard bags, Gina?
We'd like, yeah.
The term that they call it in other districts, yeah.
So you're talking.
Some version of that.
Okay, so maybe even being allowed to do some kind of remote learning on snow days, so it counts?
Correct.
Interesting, I love it.
But ultimately, Andy's the one that says, this is our last day of school.
Excellent.
He's like, in that case.
We'll start sending him donuts to brib him.
Any other questions about it?
At this time, with the board's permission, I would accept a motion to accept the administrator's recommendation for the school calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So move.
So I have a motion in the second, I have a, from Carol, second by Rob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by roll call, Amy?
Amy, aye.
Tammy?
Tammy, aye.
Carol?
Carol, aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
And Rob?
Aye.
Okay. At this point, more for the public who will be watching the video, we would be going into a non-public session. You have received a separate invite from Mr. Thompson to do the non-public. Just so folks at home understand what will be taking place. Each year at this time, we do what we call the nomination list. These are teachers who would be nominated to return to us next year. It is the last part of our meeting, we would go into non-public. Gina will present the list, and we will have a discussion on that. We would come out of non-public, and we would have one motion, and that would be to approve the superintendent's recommendations for teacher nominations, and then we would move to adjourn. So at this point, I'd like to have a motion to move into non-public.
So moved.
Andy, can I ask a question before we move to that?
Absolutely.
Are you saying for our coming back to actually adjourn the meeting, do we need to come back onto this Zoom line?
We typically.
Or can we do it through our other one?
We can do, we can do it as we traditionally do in a regular meeting, where we would just have already shut off the cameras and everything. But the, the nomination list that we will discuss ends up in the public minutes as well as the, the vote by the board.
Cool, thanks for clarifying.
I just also want to let you know that there are materials that you would need for non-public that have been sent to you, and a updated version was sent during this meeting.
and a updated version was sent during this meeting.
But those are highly confidential documents. They cannot be shared with anyone, right?
That, that's correct, but 72 hours from now, they would become public documents anyways.
Well, even so, they're not to be forwarded to other, to members outside of our board membership.
That's correct. And we will also review that again in non-public. So I have a motion for Tammy to move into non-public. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Amy?
Amy, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Carol?
Carol, aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Rob? I believe Rob.
Rob dropped, had to leave the call.
So we're moving into non-public, four to zero. Thank you very much and I'll see you in non-public.